Pursuant to the Texas Government's Code. Pursuant to the Texas Government's Code. Chapter 551, Bastrop City Council will hold a regular meeting on October 27th. That's not right, what is today?
December 10th.
November 10th. November 10th and the city council chambers located at 1311 Justice Street, Bastrop, Texas to consider the following matters called our order. We are called to order, we have a full house here, and I need to ask a question before we do the plays of religions. Do we have any veterans in the house besides Mike Talbot? Uh, Mike?
Victor.
Victor, would you join Mike up here and lead us in the plays of religion?
Terry.
Terry?
I'm Justin.
Terry? Are you a veteran? Would you please come and join these us? Anybody else? We're gonna stand and they will lead us in the places to the flights.
With the intention to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one nation under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for that service and for your service as veterans. We'll continue with a prayer along the same lines and invocation. God of all nations, you are our strength and shield. We give you thanks today for the devotion and courage of all those who have offered military service for this country. For those who have fought for freedom, for those who have laid down their lives for others, for those who have borne suffering of mind and body, for those who have brought their best gifts to times of need. God, in your mercy and love, we thank you for their lives. And we ask that you lift up by your spirit those who are now at war, holding them in the safety of your hands. And finally, give to us your people both grateful hearts and a united will to honor these men and women by following their examples on this day and in this place, by dedicating ourselves to the same spirit of giving and service so that we may provide the best for those we serve. The Bastrop County Historical Society with its Visitor Center Museum will make a presentation to us. Georgia and Gosey will lead that. Did I get that right? In, Gosey?
George.
Well, we'll go with Georgia.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and city manager Talbot. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you to present Bastrop County Historical Society's operations and maintenance budget for 2016, as well as share some overview of our accomplishments and our goals for the future. Give me a moment to just get this PowerPoint set up. I'm showing off.
Appreciate it. Can you talk a little bit louder?
A little louder, can you hear me?
Better.
My nerves are making me soft spoken rather than loud.
You're one of us.
Yes, I am. I'd like to sort of our accomplishments. DCHS has had, I think, some significant accomplishments in this last year. I'll look at these screens, I can see it better. We added new staff, an executive director, myself, and most recently a visitor center manager, Sarah Tompkins, who was here this evening. Our volunteer base continues to grow and the volunteers that we have are committed, so we had 16 volunteers serving both our visitor center and museum, and they clocked more, they clocked 2,255 hours. Can you hear me better now? We sponsored, we sponsored and hosted the Historic Trust Bridge Open House that had a really good turnout, I dare say something in the neighborhood of 75 to 100 people. We completed three permanent museum exhibits, three temporary exhibits. We hosted a garage sale that brought in a significant contribution to our overall operating expenses. We submitted three grant applications, hosted several tour groups, including, and we did presentations to the Rotary, the Harbor Pilot Lives from Dallas, as well as the First United Methodist Church. We had a total tourist visitation in the first three quarters of this year of 6,493 and museum visitors totally 3,765. We anticipate that by the end of December, we will have reached a 9,000 visitor level, which is wonderful. We wanted to share with you some of the faces of the visitors who came for the various activities we hosted. Our Quanah Parker exhibit, the Texas Conservation Core exhibit visitors, and one of many visitors who have come to see, to see our engine number one, our 99-year-old first motorized fire engine. We're very proud of that over there. Will you even ring the bell for children? Three exhibits held in 2015 include the Runway Straight, the Road to Independence, and Settlement Life. The photos were done, the paintings, I should say, were done by a Texas native, Lee Jameson. This is just a reflection of our museum and visitor center visits and the anticipated 9,000 that I indicated, but you can see over the course of time that we've continued to grow our audience and intend to do so in the future. As part of the long-range planning that was done by the Bastrop County Historical Society, there are 10 themes there that we intend to continue to focus on and to grow in every area. I want to point out just four that I think we're very focused on right now, and that's sustainable funding, making Bastrop a destination location involving youth in the museum and the work of the museum, and community outreach. We're hoping to grow our collaboration with other organizations and partnerships. These are our overarching goals for 2015 through 2019. I shared these last year. And exhibit and archives, we got to complete our president exhibits, and we're well along the way towards doing that. We want to be able to increase the number of presentations that we do annually. I skipped one. Programs, we're in a process, process of developing programs that will, would better engage our community members, children in particular. Of course, we're hoping to increase the resources that come into the organization. We will have funded and hired at least one full-time position, and that's something that we accomplished in this year. And then tourists and patrons, we want to increase the number of our visitors. So these are goals that we have made progress on in every area. Goals accomplished, we completed the three new exhibits. We held a capital campaign that was targeted for $150,000. We achieved three-quarters of that ambition, and it puts us in a position where we are able to move forward with the installation of those exhibits that have been forecasted for the main art gallery, and we're excited about that. We acquired and added 27 new artifacts to the archives. We have members from the community who always come and want to pass on a piece of their legacy, and we're happy to receive them. We hosted tours for at least 80 participants and provided 18 historical presentations. In the area, I've said this already, but let me just reinforce that in the area of awareness and promotion, we've provided 18 presentations to more than 700 people. In terms of resources, the volunteers, they make such a contribution to the operation of the visitor and museum center, and I think we need to get to, and we are acknowledging those contributions. We submitted grant applications to fund for staff, and our tourists and patrons, the 6,493, represent people from, that are Texas residents, 62 percent, residents from out of this, I mean, visitors from out of the state, and international visitors, and that's a number that just, I mean, 2 percent doesn't represent the many countries that come, that walk into that museum. Just the other day, we had someone from London actually walk in, I was proud of that. And this represents the staff, four and not renowned, myself, Barbara Vanna, who's been a member of the staff for almost 15 years, Anne Summard, who's been with us for at least a year and a half, if not two, and our newest member, Sarah Tompkins. Excuse me for my. For someone who does so much talking, my mouth should never go dry. What I'd like to represent, what I'd like to present is the combined income for both the museum and the visitor center. The one area I will highlight and thank you for, it's the support that we get from the city through hot funds. 21,400 to the museum and 79,900 to the visitor center. And as you can see, the visitor center is fully supported by the city, and we're appreciative of that. The total income is $161,800. And I'll pause for a minute, should you have any questions? The next image reflects the income by percentages, and as you can see, 67, 62 percent are hot funds, 19 percent events, and we do have our holiday home tour, Horizon, 9 percent from our dues, 1 percent are other, which could be a variety of small things, and from our gift shop, 4 percent. The next chart highlights our expenses, and of course, you know, with new staff, you take on additional expenses, so this is just true to form. Our payroll expenses in total are 164,600 between the museum and the visitor center. Our administrative costs are 55,360. Building operations, excuse me, 24,900, and our total expenses come up to 244,860. I'll pause. Okay. Guys are making it easy for me, thank you. Expenses, this just represents the percentages that are aligned with the chart that you just took a look at. And as generally the case, the greatest cost is always in payroll. Our financial goals for 2016, we're happy to say that our reserves are healthy. We have five months of operating expense. We still need $48,000 to complete our remainder gallery exhibits. We will continue to work with the grant writer, and certainly the staff that has come on board will make a significant contribution to seeking out other funding sources for the organization. And we're looking to support the capacity building of our administrative staff and bolster our organization's operations and program offerings. And finally, the 2016 goals include raising $48,000 we need to complete our exhibits, developing and installing two temporary exhibits, offering historical tourism and programs to targeted students, families, and tourists. We are looking for ways to identify a new fundraising activity for the organization as we go forward this year. Plan to continue to develop, develop our marketing programs to raise awareness of our work, our research, our museum exhibits, and our visitor center. And finally, we are working hard to broaden our organization's outreach and opportunities for collaborations and partnerships. I want to thank you for your support of Bastrop County Historical Society and for the time that you've given me this evening to present this information to you. I'm glad to entertain any questions you may have.
I got a question for Mike before we go to Mike. Why, explain to us and the public why the Historical Society makes quarterly presentations as opposed to other entities?
The Chris Daniel, as X is Daniel.
Oh, Daniel, sorry.
As part of the lease agreement between the Historical Society and the city, when we leased the old city hall building to them, one of the conditions was that they provide an annual report to the council and their programming and what they're doing and making sure that the mission that was presented to the council is being carried out and they're taking care of the facility.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like you did it to me. Questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. We come to proclamations. This is one regarding recycling. Whereas the city of Bastrop recognizes the importance of protecting and preserving our natural resources and adopting conscientious habits that will improve our daily lives and bring about a cleaner, safer, and more sustainable environment. And whereas although there has been a significant increase in the amount of recycling in the city of Bastrop today, we must also continue to focus on other initiatives such as waste reduction, composting, the reuse and of products and materials, and the purchasing recycled products. And whereas by encouraging businesses, state agencies, nonprofit organizations, schools, and individuals to celebrate the annual recycling day 2015, we can further promote recycling as an environmentally efficient and economically smart avenue. And whereas city, state, and community leaders can help encourage recycling by informing citizens about local recycling options, they can also help foster greater awareness of the need to expand collection programs by promoting the benefits of recycling investments for businesses. And whereas it is important that all in the city of Bastrop become involved in recycling activities and learn more about the many recycled and recyclable products available to them as customers and consumers, it is also fitting for the city of Bastrop to celebrate America Recycles Day 2015 and take action by educating citizens about the recycling options available to our community. Therefore, I, Mayor Ken Customs, do hereby recognize November 15th, 2015 as America Recycle Day. I want to present this to, Dorothy, you want to receive this? You got somebody else in camp? I will let you pass it to them. I'll take a good picture. I'm glad to say the city is engaged in the process as well. Let's get a good picture. I haven't done anything to help it. I didn't recycle. These are our two, our two king pins, or queen pins. In what we're at, presentations, proclamations, I want to refer to the fact that last week I read a proclamation, or a letter, regarding our annual Arbor Day celebration, and I just want to say that it was a, we had a great event. The proclamation affirmed what we're doing with our Parks Board, which is also our Tree Advisory Committee, and reminded that we're a tree, American tree, tree, something city. Where are we?
Tree City USA.
Tree City USA, thank you very much. What, what trees group, and especially what Jason at the Parks is doing in this regard is wonderful, and I'm just proud to be a citizen of a community where we have such an emphasis. Also, Councilmember Jackson was present to give a presentation at the Red, White, and Blue Bankwood honoring our veterans last weekend, and I'd like him to make a quick comment about that.
Thank you, Mayor. It was the first time I got the chance, actually, in 12 years to go to the banquet. It was very inspiring. The speaker was a 91-year-old veteran who was a fighter pilot and had an amazing story to tell us about his bombing for Pearl Harbor, and I was honored to be there to represent the city. It was a very good experience, and I hope to go back again next year, but he was, Captain Yellen, was just, I mean, he's going to be back, he's on television tonight. I didn't get a chance to take it with PBS, telling his story. He was just an amazing person that talked about the different things that he went through while being a fighter pilot.
Great event, Paul, thank you. We've reached citizens' comments.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, city manager. As y'all know, they have a soup kitchen, and the concerns of the people from the northern area of Bastrop, as y'all know, were bringing issues to the soup kitchen. I was informed they would come to the city council because there was nothing I could do about it. And so, at that time, that was about maybe eight months ago, and so we came with some issues about the street lighting, the covered bus shelter, and the community center in the cart bus system. And since then, we said, I got informed that the covered bus shelter was going to take place, and it's yet to take place, and now people are coming to me, asking me what's going on with it. They said it was going to be done, and there's nothing done yet. And as you can see, I told them, well, they need to come and voice their opinion as well, and they said, for what? It's not going to matter. And so some of them are kind of giving up, but when I started, what the Lord put in my heart, I'm going to keep going forward with it. And so, I know, I can't get no answers during the citizens' comment, but I did call the city secretary and make arrangements to be on the agenda so we can get some answers and find out what's going on with that issue and why have they not been done yet? And they're asking, why did the children go out there and make those imprints on the stones, and they're just sitting there not being used yet? So.
This is on my city manager's report. I can respond to your question. At the last council meeting, I advised the council, they had, I initially took to the council a design of a wood-constructed shelter, and the council asked me to look into getting a metal-constructed shelter. We did draw up the design specifications because we wanted to design it in a manner where they could be bought as kits. We had difficulty in finding a metal manufacturer who could do that, but we did achieve that, and I advised the council of that last council meeting and gave them the comparison between the metal and the wood. And on my city manager's report, tonight, that very question is before the council, we discussed the metal versus the wood, but it wasn't clear which way they wanted me to go, and I'm going to be asking them tonight which way, and once they tell me, I will get the appropriate kit orders.
Okay, with that being said, is there any way, y'all got my number? Is there any way we could be informed, you know, to know what's going on so the people that have concerns can know what's going on?
Sure. I got your number.
All right, go. Let's see.
This is on my, my, about the agenda.
The, well, some of your agenda's about the.
Which way, which way you want me to go.
Yeah.
We talked about it, but we didn't decide which way you want me to go, metal or wood? That's all we had.
And you would understand that the work that's being done to create the tiles with the imprints of the children's hands and stuff is on hold until we get that together, but we have half of the tiles ready. Do you understand that?
I, I didn't understand that we didn't have the, all the tiles.
Their, their hands done ready to go and the others being made ready, so.
Well, I think we can construct it with a temporary base until you get the rest of the, the imprints, and as I had discussed with you, Mayor, I'm committed to putting the first one in and working with you, who you've been working with to get the handprints.
Were you going to say anything else, Mike?
Yes.
When y'all have, yeah, keep going.
Okay, well, and also we're having our community picnic this month on the 14th, and I want to invite each and every one of y'all, give a, maybe if we could get in a rotation where maybe one could be present, because the people are there with questions, and I think it would be very respectful toward the citizens with these concerns if somebody from the city council would be there too, to answer their questions.
What's the date, sir?
The 14th of this month, is this coming Saturday from 2:00 to 5:00 on Main and Linden.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you, Pastor Nava.
Danielle Huber. We've seen you before, glad you're here.
If you don't know, I'm Danielle Huber, and I am speaking on behalf of the Bastrop Opera House. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager, and staff. Councilwoman Gilliland, I wanted to inform you of some special achievements at the Bastrop Opera House based on your entrance from June 23rd. Due to your interest in whether the youth program of the Opera House would be part of the Season of the Phoenix during that presentation for this year's hot funds, I wanted to let you know that on October 6th, the Bastrop Academy of Performing Arts for Young People was initiated. Two classes meet every Tuesday through December 22nd. Curriculum includes performing arts techniques and disciplines, as well as plays, musicals, contest entries, and public school touring shows. We will present a Bastrop County Historical Review at Yestrafest, April 2016. 28 students ages 6 through 16 are enrolled in the two classes. Last Saturday, we presented the Night of the Rising Stars Dinner in Cabaret grossing $2,500. We also were informed that a grant written by Mr. Eitz was awarded, and we will be using those funds to assist in fall tuitions and producing the first academy stage production in 2016. The grant is from the Coastal Bend area in honor of Blanche Davis Moore. We are, it is a seed grant to fund the tuition of students performers in this county. We are thrilled to be recognized by this philanthropic organization. I hope that you and everyone in our city government is pleased to know of the successful launch of the academy of the Performing Arts for Youth. Thank you all for allowing me to speak to you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
And the grant is $5,000.
Thank you. You know, we're not allowed to say things like we really, I mean, we're not allowed to comment. We can say thank you very much, all we can do, because it's not posted on the agenda.
I'm Sean Clutch, and I am a member of the Bastrop Main Street Program Board, Advisory Board. I'm here tonight to remind you guys, and hopefully everybody in here got an invitation, to our celebration that we're holding on Thursday, this coming Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Neighbor's Yard. We will be awarding, recognizing the awards that we have had Bastrop's phenomenal success in capturing four different state and national awards. We'll have some pizza and some drinks available, but we'll keep the speeches short so that we can keep the toasts long. All of the rewards are very big, but the nod from the National Main Street Program is, is really a big one. Only two cities in Texas have ever been. Only two cities in Texas have ever been tapped for it. This is their most prestigious award, and we are one of only, we are one of only 10 in the country vying for it. It values the Main Street communities that best exemplify the Main Street approach to revitalization, to, to, for a comprehensive, preservation-based, commercial district. I quoted that from them, so I'm not very good at that. That consideration is based on a number of factors, but some of the most important is having an active commitment by both the public and private sectors, and in the use of model partnerships of multiple groups, entities, and individuals. Our Main Street Program and its partners should be very proud, and we'll know the winner in May of 2016. That theme of public and private sector involvement and mutual collaboration of various groups also played heavily in our achievement of winning the Texas Downtown Association Award for Best Marketing this year for our billboard project. It was initiated by the Downtown Business Association and spearheaded by Nassim Konsari. It banded together 25 different businesses and five partners, the DBA, the Main Street Program, Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Bastrop Marketing Corporation. Next, the American Planning Association Texas Chapter chose us as their 2015 Current Planning Award winner for our Form-Based Code Project. Honoring the value of planners and planning efforts in Texas cities, it also highly valued strong community involvement and recognized the many, many months of efforts by many volunteers in addition, of course, to our STAR Planning Department. Lastly, but not least, Bastrop was awarded the Scenic City Bronze Award. I believe you have that hardware, Councilwoman Jackson. So we've really, we've had quite a coup here, so we decided that a celebration was in order. We certainly deserve a big pat on the backs of amazing official administrators and an accomplished cadre of dedicated volunteers. But we don't think for a minute that we deserve to rest on these laurels. As we have come to realize of late, there is a limit to how we can preserve our successes and still move forward to bigger and better development that earns us awards. Without adequate funding, a centralized marketing focus, and relief for our mostly volunteer marketing workforce, those faithful STP, same 20 people, same 30 people, same 40 people, Bastrop cannot compete for bigger awards. If we want to proudly continue this pace of recognition, we must invest in professional expertise and bolster our blessed volunteers. Many, many, many businesses in the city depend on a vibrant, welcoming downtown. I know mine does. We've been on the right track, and we need to keep it going, so come on down to Neighbor's and celebrate our successes. This Thursday, 5 to 7, everybody in town is invited. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I think we'll have an opportunity to some of the points to respond. Under announcements, our first opportunity is for Kay or Doc to comment on how we're doing with the comprehensive planning.
Can you talk to Allison first?
Thank you. Are you, are you taking care of her?
I'm just kidding.
Thank you. If she needs some help, let's know. Doc, Doc Jackson will comment. Anything to comment on the comprehensive planning?
We have another steering committee meeting that's coming up shortly, and we'll have a report on what's happening after that meeting. It's coming up...
Friday the 20th.
Friday the 20th, thank you. And after that meeting, we'll have a more in-depth report for the public as well as for the council.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you for your service. We, Councilmember Macken Alex told me she was somewhat under the weather at the beginning of the meeting, and she has certainly excused an absence for the rest of this meeting. We move to the, any other announcements from any council member? Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity today, very educational...
Thank you, Gary.
...to get a tour with the City Manager of all the city facilities. I've been wanting to do that, but I tried to wait after the budget process, and anyhow, we spent a good part of the day today touring all the facilities. And I was just going to say that I highly recommend that if any other council people have not toured all the facilities, very enlightening to see what all the facilities that we have and their condition, the, where they stand as far as the capabilities today, where the City Manager feels like and his department heads feel like, how, how the facilities stack up for the future, what the future needs might bring, what plans are in progress for those facilities. So it was very educational, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, Gary, I want to always appreciate the time when you get to spend time with a council member, but more importantly, I appreciate you taking the time to tour the facilities, and I make the same offer to any of the other council members. If you want to, if you even want to do it on a Saturday, I do think it will help as we go forward to give you a frame of reference on some issues.
I suggest you, if people are interested, you might put three of us together so you could save, save a few trips.
That's true.
You could do three, and that would do it. Doc?
I just had some announcements, just some things to enlighten the public about, and thanks, Sean, for talking about the downtown award celebration. I was going to mention that, but since she's covered it so eloquently, that's one less thing, but it is an event worth attending. On Saturday, the Veterans Car Show is going to be downtown, also on the 14th. Pastor, well, Pastor Navah just left, but on the 14th, that's another event that's happening here in Bastrop. As you know, our weekends are pretty packed with activities, and so that's something that's been going on for quite some time, but that's also happening on the 14th. I mentioned about, if some of you read the newspaper this past weekend, or you may have heard me talk a little bit about it, Houston-Tilliston University is looking at expanding their offerings from their Austin campus to possibly start some classes here at Navya Facility. It was, there was an article in Saturday's paper about that, and they're putting together a study to try to get city and county and community involvement. It's a private university, and so there won't be a taxing entity involved, and it looks very promising. I'm very excited about that prospect of adding higher education to our community. And so they hosted a meeting with the president, several staff members that came and visited with alumni and community members, and you can read more about it in the Bastrop Advertiser, but I will try to keep you posted on what's happening with that. Just a reminder that on December the 9th, which is a real busy week for us because we've got council, we've got the city Christmas party, we've got the TML Regional Meeting here across the street at the Convention Center. Our own Senator Kirk Watson is being honored. As you may have read also earlier, he was, he was selected as one of the Legislators of the Year in San Antonio at our Texas Municipal League Meeting. He was unable to attend, so he is going to receive that honor here in Bastrop. And so that'll be December the 9th at 7:00. It's a regional meeting of all the cities in our region, so it's kind of fitting that he gets to have that honor with several cities being here. So I'd like to invite people to, if you're interested, get in touch with our City Secretary or me about arrangements for that, but it should be fun.
Doc, I'd just like to comment. I did read that article, and you did mention to me at the last council meeting that that might be a possibility, so I read that with great interest. Thank you.
Other, what are we doing? Announcements, yeah.
Just one, just one quick announcement. We are in the final week of our Team Up to Clean Up competition, and I'd like to give a little shout-out to the Public Works Department, because I know y'all are, are working hard, doing your regular jobs, and also collecting all the trash and trash recyclables and weighing them for the competition. So we, we notice, we appreciate it, and thank you so much. Next council meeting, we will be giving the awards to the winners.
And, and we'll put that on the agenda while we're thinking about it. Mike, we're ready for City Manager's Report.
I'm just going to hit the highlights.
Hit just a few of the highlights, because some of them are going to involve some discussion.
I'm sorry, Mike, would you, hold on, I just think I have a request. Mike, as a matter of, let's see, trying to think of a way to do this parliamentary way. Well, Willie, I think I'm going to defer to Mike on that. Please continue. He's asking me about executive session and...
We can move that up and take care of that now, and it's posted, and...
You want to do it before you finish your Manager's Report?
I, it's up to you. It's your call.
Your, your advice, Willie?
I thought I read somewhere we were going to start meeting, go into executive session, and we're talking about...
Turn your mic on. Yeah, I'm not aware of that, Mike.
I did, I did mention in my City Manager's Report that we were going to take this right up front.
Well, I'd say if we've said it and you want to do it...
I think we should. Everybody's here, so...
We will adjourn into a...
Executive.
...executive session in order to discuss...
It's item section one, item number one on your executive session post.
Section 551.071, which is complication with attorney related to legal matters. We're now in executive session. Oh, we got a court. With sincerest appreciation for the patience of the public and the press, we return now to our regular session from executive session, and I call upon the City Manager to summarize our conversation in the executive session.
It's my understanding, based upon our discussion and review, that the council is satisfied in the manner in which the City Manager has handled this permitting process to date, and to continue in the direction that we set, and to continue to put the effort forward that I have going forward in preparation for the January meeting.
Thank you very much, Council, and our attorneys, and City Manager Talbot. Mike, I think we're in the middle of your City Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. The first item is on page two of my report. As I stated, trying to keep you updating and upcoming events, I've had a request that the council consider having a joint workshop with the Planning and Zoning Commission either on Thursday, November 19th, or Monday, November 23rd. I know that there's a lot of meetings coming up, but there's been some issues that have arisen. This was an area that the council had really placed emphasis on as a redevelopment area, and I think it would be beneficial if we could have this meeting, and I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission is available either one of those dates, and I would just like to see if it would be possible if we could have this joint meeting.
How long do you anticipate the meeting to take?
Mayor, I will do my best to eliminate two hours, or shorter.
Well, that eliminates putting it in, inserting it into a regular meeting, as I see why you did.
Yes, sir.
You're advising us that it's of such importance, and we need to have a special meeting.
I really do. If I didn't think it was important, I would not have put it in my report.
Is it, is it just for one set?
One item only.
No, one interpretation in general, and we're going to discuss the planning zoning on one particular issue?
Yes, sir.
Or is this something that's going to be a uniformed, you know, rubber every development or every issue that comes along?
I, I think that this meeting will set forth the framework on future issues like this, because it's been such a long time since we've had projects like this, and I think once we have a general understanding between both planning, zoning, and council, I don't foresee this having to be a reoccurring matter, Mr. Del Rosa, under, I'm hoping it's going to be a one-time meeting is what I'm shooting for.
Well, let me say, Mike, I'll call the meeting from, for our end, and I'm sure that Ms. Patterson will call it from the other end. If we, I suggest that you have the City Secretary poll us and find out what comes to work.
All right. That's what we'll do.
I'll just mention in advance, though, that 20, we have our conferences on, okay, I guess I have to be prepared since we are, our steering committee meeting at 7:30 on the 20th that next morning, so 19th, not looking good for us, but we get 7:30 next day, so...
Well, you can't get a nice sleep between then and 7:30 in the morning? Just curious what you're thinking.
And, and I'm not available on the 19th.
On 23rd, it's looking pretty good.
I'm not available on the 19th either.
Well, it looks like it's going to be the 23rd then. The next item, which was brought up earlier, I just, going over my notes from the last meeting, this is on page four, the bus shelter, we did have a considerable discussion on the pros and cons of the metal, and I just didn't want any miscommunication between the council and myself, and I just need some direction on what you would like me to do and how you would like me to proceed on this project. Because I don't want you sitting there thinking I'm doing something, and I'm going back through the minutes and my notes, we really didn't reach a conclusive, conclusive decision whether to go metal or wood. We did discuss the fact that wood, the metal would last longer, require less maintenance. It's just purely what you want me to do.
You have, you done, you have brought up extra dollar, not particular difference, particular wood and metal?
The metal's about 5,000, and the wood's about 1,500 to 2,000.
Yeah.
How many would we like to do at one time, or where are we going to spread that on?
Well, what, what I had initially agreed to is to kick, start this program is we would put the first one in, but leave it up to organizations and groups to raise the funds to put additional ones in.
So, Mike, are you, are you saying that we are going to have these, like, prefab kits available? Are we going to purchase them in advance and then have them for these organizations? Or are we waiting for them to come forward?
We would need to wait for them to come forward to make sure...
Before we order them?
Before, but, but my understanding is there's not going to be a whole lot of production time once we get the first one done for them going forward.
So we could conceivably do the first one as, as a good metal one, but an organization could, could do a wood one later?
If that's acceptable to the council. If it doesn't, I mean, I'm...
I don't know if we want to mix them, but...
Well, let me, yeah, I mean, one of, let me just say, one of the things that somebody came up with was, I mean, might have been Mike, that we ought to have a uniform look. Others have said that not necessarily the case. I asked the, I was working on this with our city engineer, the chairman of our Construction Standards Board and a local carpenter, and everybody except me said it's just, it's just stupid to do wood. It'll warp, it won't last, you know, and my idea on the wood was, I know how to go build a thing with wood and a roof, but I don't know how to do the metal stuff. And, but I was convinced, as much as I wanted to do the other, that they were right because they were the experts on this. And I'd just say that we agreed to do this largely as a response to the fact that we have neglected the north area for a long time. We need to get this done, and we need to get one of them up. And Mike and his staff have come up with a good prototype. I think we'll accept what they've got and just see what happens. Let's get one of them up, and, you know, maybe some other council deals with it, or some other organization or something, but let's get the one done, fulfill our pledge, and not have to have the embarrassment of talking to Pastor Navah one more time because we're three months late doing what we said we would do.
Well, can I make a motion then that we, that we give Mike the instruction to do the...
You, you...
Oh, I'm sorry, but can I?
Yeah, you can.
We can take action, but we, we agreed that we wouldn't talk about money during this thing, but I think that's not a... But I think that's not about money, it's about, Mike's already told us about the money, we've had plenty of time to think about it. The question is, not about the cost of it, but do we want Mike to go with the design that his staff has come up with? I don't wanna talk about money, although I know it does involve money because we agree we wouldn't talk about money. We wouldn't vote on money during these things.
I, I just need, you wanna go metal or wood? That's really what I need to know.
Do I need a motion to say that, or then I would like to move?
Okay, then it's gonna be metal.
I would like to move that we like metal better.
Motion on metal, you got a second? A second motion on metal? Let's, uh, let's have a vote on that, and make sure that we're covered.
Councilmember Gilliland? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
All right, Mike?
Okay, the, the last item is, I think I got is item L, which is on page seven. At, at the June twenty-third council meeting, the Boys and Girls Club provided the council with a brief presentation related to a request for an agreement with the City of Bastrop and the Boys and Girls Club, the agreement. A representative from the Boys and Girls Club met this past week inquiring whether the council had made any specific discussions, providing an extension of the agreement based upon the June twenty-third presentation, and I included that presentation as exhibit D. I advised the Boys and Girls Club, we had not made a specific decision or response. The council had asked me, as part of the shelter grant process, to consider the, that location for alternate Plan B. The city is currently working with the Y, but I can't say that's gonna be, gonna make it or not. That's, um, why I'm still moving forward with Plan B, which is gonna be what I call a flex Plan B. But it, it clearly, the footprint will fit on that site, and if that's the direction we end up going, and it would take care of a lot of issues, I think. But it still leaves up in the air about the extension of the agreement, and that, that's what they were kinda asking of me. And I didn't really know how to-
Well, it would be true, would it not, that we could extend that agreement anytime?
Right.
Even if it expires for six months, a year, two years, or whatever.
I mean, if, at the end of our other process, and we do go another route, there is nothing going to prohibit the council from resurrecting that agreement and doing a, an, an extension or, um, another timeframe for them to do their capital fund program that they referenced in their presentation, to do that. And we'll know that in the first month of January.
What is, what is the length of time that they're requesting for an extension?
I think they were asking for two to three years, I believe. Five, I'm sorry, five years.
So, um, I mean, we're not closing the door by letting the agreement expire?
No.
Uh, unless we say we're closing the door, which nobody's come close to saying, and nobody would say. When can we, when should we expect a recommendation view on Plan B on the-
You're gonna have it on December the eighth.
December eighth, okay. Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, just one last item, and this is for your reaffirmation. Just a reminder that at the last council meeting, you had an item on the agenda, making an appointment to the appraisal district because of a vacancy. If you do want to exercise that right, you'll either need to let Ann or I know before the next council meeting, because if you do wanna nominate somebody, we've got until November thirtieth to get it in.
And if not, it will not be on the agenda.
Right, so just let us know what you want. Be glad to answer any questions.
I think we're good to go. We'll move on to consent agenda. Anybody have an item they would like to deal with separately?
Ask us questions on item A four and A six.
A four and A six, we will deal-
I'll not deal with A four.
A four, we will deal with separately. We will deal with items A one through A ten minus A four in this, uh, in one motion. Item A two is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of the second reading of an ordinance amending City Code Section twelve dot oh-six dot oh-oh-two, implementing a parallel parking zone in the central business district of the city along the east side of Main Street, between Pine Street and Chestnut Street, providing enforcement authority related to saying, containing a serviceability clause and establishing an effective date. A six, consideration, discussion, and possible action by the city council for approval and adoption of the resolution that adding Texas Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System Investment Pool, Texas Class, a local government investment pool administered by Public Trust Advisors LLC, thus creating a program for diversification of the City of Bastrop's investment in accordance with the Public Fund Investment Act, Texas Government Code Section two-two-five-six dot oh-oh-one E T S D Q period, and the City of Bastrop's investment policy. A seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action by the city council for approval and adoption of the road resolution adding financial Northeastern Securities Incorporated to the eligible broker slash dealer list to engage in investment transactions on behalf of the City of Bastrop in accordance with the City of Bastrop's investment policy. Is there a motion to adopt items A one through ten minus four?
Can I, can I add to shake to be cool as well, one quick question?
I've read item six, do I get credit for that, J.C.? Okay, we're not voting, we're, is there a motion to approve items A one through ten minus four and six?
I'm moved.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
All right, that passed, thank you very much. We now have before us item A four, which captioned, and whatever I have eloquently read. So, Willie?
I'll, I'll just, uh, just a question of the legal council. When you threw up the paperwork on there, I was just- I was just looking and reading that in the deal with the volunteer fire department. On what said to the state, the City, the City of Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department here by crew, and in front of that it says volunteer fire department. I just wanna make sure there's not, there won't be any confusion after that first line with the City of Bastrop. Because I don't want anything bad to happen. Could it, could it be pretty much stated uniformly across all of them where it says the fire department?
That's a good catch, and we'll be glad to make that change and make it uniform. I think what happened, Mr. Del Rosso, is that when we created new texts, we put City of Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department, and then we carried over some provisions in the existing code, it was a little design that didn't have that text in it. But we'll go back and amend that so that it's consistent throughout.
The first is that the City of Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department here by crew, and it says volunteer fire department, and you go through three sentences now to City Volunteer Fire Department, so you have a few, few different-
Yes, sir.
I just want to kind of vote for a lot of connection with that, that is other city.
That's good, good catch. We'll make sure that gets done.
And the other, Mike, first sample-
Hang, hang on a second, item A four, is there more on A four?
No.
All right, so I bet the city secretary's sitting there thinking he didn't read, read A four, which I am now going to read. Incentivation, discussion, and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance amending chapter five and chapter nine of the City of Bastrop Code of Ordinances and recodifying portions of chapter five into chapter eight, creating and enumerating the powers and duties of the positions of director of public safety, fire chief, and assistant police chief, adding provisions concerning the administration of the Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department, repealing revisions of chapter five regarding the position of fire marshal, creating the position of fire inspector, amending provisions related to the powers and duties of the City of Bastrop Volunteer Firefighters, providing a savings and a repeal clause, and providing an effective date.
Mayor and council, I would recommend approval, subject to the recommend, uh, change by Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso that we use throughout the ordinance uniformly, City of Bastrop Volunteer Fire Department.
Is there a motion to that effect? Moved by Councilmember Gilliland, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any discussion? Willie, thank you for clarifying that. We're, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
I have read item A six, and Willie, you're on.
Just, just a quick comment, Mike, on this deal, it looks like, you know, maybe we need to do waters for the City of Bastrop, or as far as broker, if you think we're doing an investment, as far as investment for the City of Bastrop, right?
We're just trying to make a little bit more-
And no offense to the, the investment officer, and I recommend, but you, you weren't a brither on it.
She and I worked very closely, we met, I met with them, and we spent about an hour together. Talked to Dan Wegmiller after we met, and this is a very secure investment. And Dan confirmed what we heard, that a lot of cities are opening up a little bit more because it just gives us, we're gonna make a little more money.
Good, I'll make that vote to approve it.
Second.
Discussion? Ann, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Uh, thank you all. Item B one is a public hearing concerning variance on six-point-five acres Taylor Lane subdivision in Nancy Blakey survey. Melissa, Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go out and kind of have a, a property owner notification that I received this evening.
Thank you.
You know, while we're looking at this, we might say, I have no objection to the request.
So, hold it.
Yeah.
Um, with that, the plat will be coming based on your vote this evening, approval of, of the variance, a plat will be submitted. And again, these are from the adjacent property owners, and the three owners are supportive of this, rectifying this, this subdivision from nineteen eighty-three. It's in our, um, Area A for our platting jurisdiction off of Taylor Lane.
So, you got a one-sentence version of why they don't, didn't need to have street frontage?
Um, it's one-sentence of early news, unfortunately, with a lot layouts adjacent to it that are already existing. That street frontage is almost nearly impossible for this subdivision that is essentially same size and configuration since nineteen eighty-three.
So, you're looking for, this is a public hearing, and do we have action on this some other time, or?
Um, you would actually vote on this variance as well with the public hearing, and then-
So, it's all one, it's all one package?
Yes.
Uh, I haven't seen anybody that wants to speak on this.
Um, no, quite a few of the neighbors were here at the very beginning of the meeting, and I did meet with them, um, in the lobby area, and this is when I received these two surrounding property owner notifications, and I, I hope I have clarified, uh, some of the questions or, um, just information for them.
So, you would characterize their going away happy?
Yes.
Well, friends? Anybody wanna make a motion? Is nobody, you know, we're, we're a public, I have to, to close the public hearing, we got a hearing, nobody wants to speak? We've heard from you, the folks have left?
I move that we approve it.
Second.
Uh, moved by Gary, seconded by Willie. Questions, comments, discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Del Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilliland?
Thank you all. B two, conduct a public hearing to receive citizens' input on an amendment to the zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, section thirty-six point two, zoning use charts and A three definitions. To amend, amend to define moving of existing building structures with a conditional use permit within residential zoning classifications. So, Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council. Item number B two and B three are related, so B two is the, um, public hearing, and, and B three will be the first reading of the ordinance. Uh, this item came about in regards to, um, response from our construction standards board in defining standards for moving of existing structures within the city limits. Quite honestly, we require manufactured homes to go through a conditional use permit, and those are structures that are moved into the city limits. This is very similar, or, or kind of leveling the playing field for, um, existing homes that are being moved into this, um, city limits. And honestly, with that, it's also establishing, uh, parameters that these homes shall meet and or define prior to moving into the city limits. So, it not only affects chapter fourteen, which is the zoning classification zoning chapter, but with that, we're also, um, updating chapter three, which is the, um, building regulations chapter to make sure that they reference each other and correlate. Uh, with that, you can see, uh, the underlines, uh, represent additions, uh, languages in these sections. We are adding a new use into the use chart, and then also providing a definition, and those will both go in, uh, chapter fourteen of the zoning ordinance. And then, as I mentioned, we will also be amending, uh, section, uh, three-point-one-six, which is the moving of structures in chapter three in the building regulations. Not only did the construction standards board meet on this, uh, twice, they also, um, did a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this issue. Planning and Zoning Commission has recommended approval of these ordinance changes, and also in the next part of your ordinance, in item B number four, you can see the resolution of support that the construction standards had for the modification of this language to both portions. So-
Let me try the dummy, the dummy understanding of this. If, if, if we bring in a manufactured home, there are federal and whatever standards that that, when, when it's being manufactured, it fits all the codes that are necessary.
Absolutely.
But if, if my brother and I decide to go over to the Grange and move a house down here, goodness knows what's in it, and this allows us to inspect it and make sure it's up to code before we start doing anything with it. Is that more or less correct?
Yes, and it more, more or less, honestly, it really looks at inspecting and getting a good parameter of the structure prior to being moved in, so you know what's, what shape the structure is being moved into it. And it also puts, um, conditional use permits do require, uh, surrounding property owner notification. It goes and is attached individually to that property, so it would also allow neighbors to know what's, what's coming in as well, which is similar to what we do, it's what we do for manufactured homes at this point in time in the residential zoning classifications.
So, Melissa, I just think you can, um, are you saying that if, if someone wanted to move an existing home into the City of Bastrop, it has to be inspected first?
Yes.
And what are the parameters for inspection?
Well, the parameters are, um, it, very, the construction standards board talked about this quite a bit. So, they do want, um, a certified inspector to establish and look at it, but I think that's partly something that they feel, um, by having, or I guess knowing what the extr- knowing what the existing structure looks like and plan to be moved in, they would have a good relevance to look at it through the conditional use permit application and see where that structure is and what, what needs to be updated or upgraded to bring it up to today's codes and compliance. So, it's more of an inspection to kind of see where the structure is at this point in time, and it does give a frame of reference on what the property owner hopes to do and update it to bring it up to code compliance.
So, are you saying that you could deny them, um, the ability to move a, a structure in that you didn't feel was, I don't know, upgradable enough?
Absolutely, and quite honestly, it, it would be really looked at, much like, uh, conditional use permits are for a manufactured home. It would be looked, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as city council, would have the ability to look at what, what the structure is that's being moved in.
And it, it also sounds like it would prevent us from having a, a house on the ground here that's in bad shape and not up to code, and, I mean, it's always different when you, if somebody spends money moving a house or something, there's always a little tendency to say, well, you know, we've seen- tendency to say, well, you know, we've seen that before, and this would prevent that because they wouldn't move it, and we would save them the trouble of moving expenses if it wasn't gonna, you know, or they would at least know what they were up to in terms of making the changes, they would add that to their construction costs, and it would be fair to everybody, sounds to me.
Absolutely, I would agree.
Kelly, you still thinking over there?
Well, there, there's at least one, one contractor in, in town that I can think of off the top of my head that moves some really decrepit buildings into town, but then fixes them up to be really nice. So at what point do you say, no, you can't move that decrepit building into town?
Again, I, I, I think that this gives us a lot of information prior to the structures being moved, to really see what condition the structure is in, and what the outcome is, is going to be with it. So it would give not only staff, but the planning and zoning commission and the city council some preview on, on what's, what's going on on those structures that are being moved in.
And the owner, and the owner of the structure.
Absolutely.
I had to ask, so if a house or whatever structure really doesn't meet code requirements here, you would just tell that owner before they moved it, this is what you're, you're gonna have to do to make it meet our standards? And so then subsequently, if they move the house, you're not gonna restrict them from moving as long as they make the upgrades, right?
Absolutely, although I would say the approval of moving the structure would be through the conditional use permitting process. So it would, it, it does reside with our office to a certain degree, and I think that this spells that out a little bit better, but it also does have to get the approval from the planning and zoning commission and city council.
Right, but if they reject it, they would say, this is why we're rejecting it, and then they could mitigate that, you could just go round and round until they got it to where it was acceptable, I assume. If you would define what the requirements are to bring that up to, to standard, and if they agree to that, then they could actually bring it in. Is that a reasonable?
Potentially, yes. I mean, as staff, we always do staff recommendations.
Right, okay.
So, what are your mind, theory of saying what happens if this is a zoning change?
Well, there's gonna be an ordinance next to approve this.
But if they're out on the, on the, on the program?
Uh, are they separate items, or they?
Um, only, item, only item B, what are we on, B two? Sorry. B two and B three are connected, so this is just changing, changing the ordinance for moving of structures, existing structures. So, item B two is the public hearing, and then B three is the first reading of the ordinance changes.
Kelly, you still thinking over there?
Um, just to clarify what Gary was asking, are you, are you saying the conditional use permit will only be issued once they have made the upgrades that you approved?
No.
Or only that they agree to make them once it is moved into town?
It, um, honestly, the conditional use permit establishes a process for moving in the structures. It starts with an inspection of the structure, which has been lacking before, prior to being moved in, and it does get the property owner to start thinking about what improvements would need to be made to that structure once, once it's moved in. And it also establishes, based on the construction standards board, and I think even the planning and zoning commission's recommendation, looking at a timeline on when the structure was being completed. You know, houses, you know, new houses don't take over a year to remodel or construct, you know, to, to try to give, engage a good idea on what, a timely construction schedule on, on remodeling of, of these homes or moving in the homes. And then if there is a delay, because obviously things do happen, you know, refining or updating that schedule, so having a, a true kind of project timeline for these structures.
Kelly, that minimum standard you're talking about, the conditions that you put on the CUP, you're like, you gotta be like thousand foot minimum square footage, there's gotta be somebody put a wire, you gotta have the front gable or, or something like the front porch or something. Some of those conditions are always put on the net, but we could, we could, we could put on a manufactured home, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, yes, I guess the conditional use permit definitely allows you to put conditions on, on structures. So, what's unique about that is it can be a case-by-case basis, which is unique on every, on every individual case, so that's what's great about a conditional use process.
I'm still not clear, though. If I come to you with this building that does not meet the code at this time, but I plan to, to make it meet the code, can I move it based on, on these rules? Can I move it into the city? What would prevent me from doing that?
Nothing. If you meet the conditional use requirement requirements and get planning and zoning commission and city council approval, you would be.
So the inspection is?
Part of the supplemental process for the conditional use permit.
And it inspects the structural integrity, or what's it, is that it?
Yes.
That all it inspects?
Structural integrity, if anything, electrical or mechanical or anything else that they're hoping to keep in the old existing building. It would essentially inspect the structure that they're planning on move, and might have an idea on, on what to upgrade or move, or change to meet the building codes that, you know, change to meet once the building is placed at, at the new location.
We're talking about a manufactured home we can put on, on that block.
No, this is, this is about a.
This is about, this is what it comes to, Dan.
It might, there's another item that might have some similarity, but right now we're talking about moving in a, like an old house.
Yes.
Kelly?
I think I get it.
Uh, this is a public hearing. If anyone in the public wants to speak, we'd love to hear from you.
Uh, yeah, councilmember trying to speak also, I'm sorry.
Oh, I couldn't, your, your red light was blocked by Gary's.
I, I mean, I think, I was just gonna say, I, I get it now, because it's a missing link that we've had in the past, because we in the past have accepted certain buildings being brought into town, and they, some still sit incomplete, and because they did not upgrade and do the things that needed to be done to them, so this is a missing link that I think will help us in our process of accepting buildings that are brought into the city, and hopefully won't just become an eyesore, just sit for a while and not get put into use.
Well, thank you for allowing, for being patient with me to find out you wanted to speak. Uh, I'm gonna call this hearing to a close. Item B three is first reading on an ordinance granting amendments to the zoning ordinance, chapter 14, section 36.2, zoning use charts and A point three definitions defining the movement of existing buildings, structures with a conditional use permit within residential zoning classifications and amending chapter three, building regulations, article 3.16.002 and 3.16.006, providing a serviceability clause and providing an effective date. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you. Again, this would be the ordinance that would, to change our code of ordinances in these two chapters, chapter 14 and chapter three, to allow these new standards.
Is there a motion to accept this on first reading and put it on the consent agenda for the second reading?
Okay, if you want to use for the second?
It's up to you. That's, is there a second, there's a motion to approve this first reading and to place it on the consent agenda for the second? Is there any discussion? Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Item B four is another public hearing. This is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input on a request to rezone plus or minus 1.774 acres out of plus or minus 2.837 acre tract within Form Lot 10, east of Main Street, from multifamily two to single-family residential seven located north of Mesquite Street, also known as 10006 Mesquite within the city of Bastrop. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor. Item B four and B five are regarding the same rezoning classification, and essentially this is a map or a picture of the larger parent tract located at 1006 Mesquite Street. This kind of gravel drive is, it's actually Hill Street right away, that's north of Mesquite Street there. I believe we have a, a lift station at the, at the end of it. This property is currently duly zoned, it has portions of C2 commercial that is towards the 95 front edge, and the back part of the tract is zoned, currently zoned MF2, and with that, they are proposing to rezone what is currently multifamily two to SF7, single-family seven. There is a subsequent application that is B six and B seven, that they're looking at a conditional use permit for this property. But with that, this case is just the zoning change to go from MF2 for this 1.744 acres to be zoned single-family seven. With that, we received one notification, one, one property owner from the southwest, happens to be the same owner of this property that they live, right?
No, it's not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, property here, but again, this is a zoning map that shows the C2 zoning was based on our original zoning maps. They took about a 500-foot strip from 95, and that's how it's zoned, portions of the tractor are zoned commercial, and the remainder portions of the tractor is on multifamily two. You can see the zoning that's south of this is single-family seven, so with that, staff is recommending approval of the zoning change, and the planning and zoning commission also recommended approval of the zoning change as well.
Well, so I read this, this clarification right here. Let me ask you, for, making voting to approve this, next year, does it make any difference? I'm looking at three different papers, and it's got 2.836, 2.837. Is any difference?
Yes.
That's the issue, maybe, okay, okay.
And just for a point of clarification, that is not a, a list station, that's actually a gas substation.
Sorry, thank you.
Sun tax, uh, gas substation.
Yes.
Sorry.
So this meant, no, no objection from any planning and zoning commission member?
Correctly, I did have one member recuse themselves being a family member, but that was it.
Okay, we, councilmembers, are you clear on what we're doing? Kelly, you wanna speak? You got your mic on there?
Um, I have a question, but it might pertain to the next item, but I'll ask it now, and if it does, just answer it later. But changing to single-family zoning in that section, that just means that single-family homes can be built there? It doesn't, does it mean that more than one single-family home can be built on that property?
Um, they are going through the subdivision process, so they could potentially divide what is now orange, hopefully, they're hoping it would be classified as yellow, the single-family classification. They could potentially have more than one home on that, because they would divide the lot into additional lots that would have to meet our standards, but you cannot have more than one home on one lot.
So they would, if they wanted to add more single-family homes on this lot, they would come back for permission to do that, or they could just do it?
They could just do it if they did the subdivision process. So this would allow them to be single-family zoning classification, and if they could have two or three lots, then, and the lot standards met our zoning classification, then they could have one single-family home on each three lots.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, you got anything? Ryan and Ruthie Washington, y'all wanna come up together? I got both names. You can do a tag team, or you can, you can have two shots at it, take your pick. It's up to you, whatever you want.
He's not here. I'm just here if y'all have any questions. Uh, we're property owners, and our son, it's the next part, though, our son is wanting to be additional use, not a manufactured home.
I appreciate your signing up, we'd ask you anyway, but, um, you don't wanna say anything else?
That's it, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, I've got you down for everything, four, five, six, and seven, if you wanna, whatever, if you wanna speak, or we have questions.
Okay.
Anything else on the hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing, move to item V five, which is first reading on an ordinance, of an ordinance granting a zoning change for plus or minus 1.774 acre tract out of Form Lot 10, east of Main Street, from multifamily two to single-family seven, residential seven, located north of Mesquite Street, also known as 10006, no, sorry, 1006 Mesquite within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, and providing an effective date. Ms. McCollum?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Again, this would be the actual ordinance for the zoning change, that would essentially change this orange portion or MF2 portion from MF2 to single-family seven.
Would, would preferable to be put on the consent agenda next time?
I think I heard councilmember Jackson moving, and.
I'll second.
And seconding by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa. Any questions, discussion?
On consent agenda?
Yeah, and he said the consent agenda for the second reading. And I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item B seven is a first reading, did I skip something? B six. Item B six should be a public hearing to receive citizen input on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured home at 1006 Mesquite Street, being plus or minus .5 acres out of Form Lot 10, east of Main, Lot Two, of the proposed Washington number two subdivision, and area zoned, single-family residential seven within the city limits, limits of Bastrop.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So as you can see, the owners of the newly rezoned, single-family zoning classification, which is approximately this red portion here, are looking to apply for, or they have applied for a conditional use permit for a manufactured home on this portion, which is kind of this green highlighted portion here, which they will be submitting a subdivision and going through the subdivision process, but they are hoping to put a manufactured home on what will be Lot Two, so, and that's about the half acres that they're proposing, and Lot One will remain a single-family residential. Councilmember Gilliland, and they could put an additional single-family home on that, and then with this new subdivision proposed, Lot Three would remain commercially and is commercially zoned.
So we're kinda fast-tracking this. If this previous ordinance does not pass on second reading, does that null and void this if we pass this tonight?
Yes.
So everybody understands that? I'll please keep going. Or is there anything else to say?
No, essentially, this is the case, and they're looking at moving a manufactured home onto this property. We do have manufactured home standards that when they pull their building permits for that, they will need to meet all of these standards, and with that, staff and planning and zoning commission has recommended this conditional use permit, making sure with the following conditions for it, that construction and permits be submitted in accordance with the standards, and that necessary permits proposed for the development be acquired prior to construction, obviously, and then also that it be, that permits be, uh, be applied for within one year from the approval of the conditional use permit after the second reading, of course.
That's why they pay me twice as much as they pay you.
Uh, councilmembers, citizens, we know you wanna do it, so.
How would we rule for CUP on item B six?
On, wait a minute, we're still on a public hearing. Anybody, anybody else wanna speak? We're gonna close the public hearing, we're gonna move to item B seven, which is first reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow a manufactured home at 1006 Mesquite Street, being plus or minus .50 acres out of Form Lot 10, east of Main Street, Lot Two, the proposed Washington number two subdivision, an area zoned, single-family residential seven within the city limits of Bastrop, setting out conditions, providing an effective date, and I'll call on Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa to make a motion.
The B seven, uh, bringing back on the next.
A second.
Consent agenda, and a second by councilmember Schiff. Anybody wanna comment on anything? Comments? Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck with the project. Conduct, item B eight, we will conduct a public hearing, a request from CSW Development to overturn a prior decision of the Bastrop Municipal Sign Review Board made on April 1, 2015, denying a request by CSW for variance to the city of Bastrop Code of Ordinances, sign ordinance, section 3.20.016, parentheses, four, poly signs on State Highway 71-2, number one, allow for an increase in the total square footage. Number one, allow for an increase in the total square footage allowed from the standard one hundred and sixty square feet up to two hundred and twenty-four square feet, that is, an increase of sixty-four square feet. And number two, increase the height of the sign from the standard thirty-five feet height up to the height of fifty feet, that is, a fifteen-foot increase. Mr. Talbot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, um, as stated in the staff write-up at a previous council meeting, um, the council granted a variance to the timeframe in which CSW could appeal, um, the action taken by the sign board, uh, denying their variance request, um, and I was instructed to coordinate with CSW, um, on this matter. According to the ordinance, um, when appealing to the council, uh, the applicant is required to file an application of appeal, um, and that application of appeal begins on page one thirty-eight, um, of your packet tonight and goes all the way through to one forty-five. And I found, uh, I am required to determine if that application of appeal, uh, is satisfactory, and I did. And then, um, the council, then I must submit this to the council within forty-five days after, uh, receiving the appeal, um, which, uh, did, I meant that timeframe, we received it on October nineteenth. Um, and, um, you are to conduct a public hearing and then the ordinance is somewhat silent, um, after that. So what I have done is, is follow the same process, um, that the sign ordinance board must follow, and that will be your item, action item, um, on order whether to grant or deny, uh, the variance. Also included into your packet is, um, all of the information, um, including the minutes that were, uh, considered by the sign board, and that is included in your packet this evening. Um, the, the ordinance also requires, uh, that the applicant be present. Uh, he is here this evening, and so with that in mind, I will turn it over to the applicant so that he can, uh, go over the nature of his request and why he should be granted request. Mr. Walker?
Could I step in here for a minute for the way you've addressed the council, but is, is the planning director going to be a part of this discussion?
Pardon?
The planning director, is she going to be a part of this discussion for fifteen years, should not be?
Uh, the ordinance says it comes to me, that's all it says.
So you answer all questions for her department?
Uh, well, if you have a question for her department, I've put all of her staff reports and everything in there, uh, which was, uh, a requirement of the ordinance.
Mine, mine, mine's pretty simple and I just want to.
Sure, you can.
Let every member of the council know that this item concerns site, uh, our sign ordinance was brought for BEC several, several, several months ago to have gone in with the council sometime discussed. This particular item, I was similar to this because of the overpasses, when this, when this sign ordinance was approved. So I'll, I'll say, whether the overpass decision tonight, that meeting still take place to address the issue because of the overpasses.
And you did instruct me to begin an evaluation of that, and I have commenced that, and, um, um, we'll have some information forthcoming to you.
Well, let me just say, since, we'll get you a second. Uh, you know, I've said this before and I'll repeat it, you know, I think if y'all are going to approve this, and I think once I hear, hear what's all going to be said, I'm going to hope that you do or recommend that you do. I, I think it ought to be the first, uh, shot of a, of a effort to get this sign ordinance changed. I don't want to get, I mean, we're giving a variance because it's not the applicant's fault that we haven't caught up with our, with our rules. And if there's a, a, an understanding or a hope or a desire on your part to change that rule for everybody else that lies, uh, along, has property lying along the overpasses or on the highway, it, we, you know, we've got to get up to speed and I think that, that what we're working on here is not just saying that our sign review board made a mistake, they were simply following rules that are antiquated. And I think that's a very important thing for us to bear in mind tonight.
Let me kind of track what I said. Mayor, we're going to be at the BEC board, uh, may the council be.
I'd like to know why the BEC board is involved at all.
Why did you bring it up?
To who? To the council?
No, well, I brought it up as, at the last time we discussed this, I brought it up, that it came up at BEDC and that, that we were very disappointed that the rules don't allow for signs to be seen from the highway. It doesn't seem to make sense and that we have a sign ordinance that's forty-three pages long, that just seems just crazy, overly restrictive.
And that's fair enough, but if the BEDC wants to bring their opinion, they should bring it formally and not just because you three guys are on BEDC and you have knowledge about this.
Yeah, I think that if, I think.
I don't, I know, I, I take offense at that. I, I take offense at that because whether I sit on the BEDC board or don't sit on the BEDC board has got nothing to do with our sign ordinance either being adequate or inadequate. Anybody with any sense would look at the sign ordinance and the conditions in the field and say, the old rules don't make sense for the current conditions. It's got nothing to do with BEDC.
And that's fine, but I don't know why the BEDC is brought into this particular discussion at this point.
I think it was just, I believe, Willie was just saying that we identified because the, the developer who's doing that project came to BEDC and said, hey, how come we can't do this? And I said, whoa, you know, this doesn't make any sense.
Right.
And it was brought to us because it was brought to us. I don't know why it came to us. It should have been brought here.
I think why it probably brought to us because discussion was businesses along seventy-one quarter were raising questions about the sign ordinance because of the overpass.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it should have been brought.
The city council was sitting at the table when this discussion came up.
Kelly's, Kelly's question, Kelly's question is a good one. The truth is that, um, where the place for the BEDC to weigh in is when we talk about the sign ordinance. And, you know, Willie and Gary are giving some information about a conversation that took place at one of our, of our next most important public entity, and I appreciate their, their bringing it up. Uh, I think if BEDC wanted to represent in this variance case, I think they could be here, but I do think that the conversation had to do with the broader issue and Mike's working on that under our instructions and I personally hope, having had this brief conversation here, that the BEDC will be represented, um, as a, as a body with weighing in about their opinion when we get around to talk about the sign ordinance.
And I completely agree with you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that there are, there's a perception that because the three of you also serve on the BEDC, that you are privy to different information than what the council is privy to. And so if the BEDC would like to weigh in, they should weigh in formally through their director, who, who addresses the issue when it comes to us and not through, um, council members who have different information than we do.
Well, I, I don't want to prolong the discussion, but when this came up, I did also advise the council that this is not the only business that has contacted my office regarding the sign ordinance and based upon that information, you instructed me to start analyzing and looking at this issue as it relates to the overpasses. I have begun that process and my report will be submitted to you.
And that's great, Mike. I'm just trying to separate BEDC business from council business unless it's formally brought as, as the body of the BEDC addressing council.
I guess we overlooked there in our meeting, but I thought Mike would address this issue with the sign, with the sign and the overpass.
Well, I think, I think Kelly's point's fair enough and I think we know what to do now. Mr. Walker?
Yes. Kevin, come on up. And I will say Kevin has been a, a, a pleasure to work with, uh, he's been patient and, uh, I, I really have enjoyed working with him on this project.
And patient with our little conversation up here, thank you.
No problem. Uh, my name's Kevin Hunter and, uh, we are developing the project at Childers in seventy-one. It was, it was an old residential project right in front of basically to the, um, east of, east of Walmart. Uh, we have a new, brand-new shiny retail building surrounded by a field of mud right now because of the twenty inches of rain we've had. That project, um, will include the hard corner, which is also vacant right now, the retail building we built, and then there's a small pad back behind it. Let me pull up this presentation.
Sorry, I can't locate that.
Sure. So, um, what I wanted to really talk about was why we need these signs and how, or why we need this sign and how important it is to businesses. Right now, the code requires, allows us to have a thirty-five foot sign. Our, uh, overpass is twenty-five feet high. If we put a thirty-five foot sign up against a twenty-five foot overpass, you're only going to see about the top third. Businesses have looked at our site, like our site, want to be at our site, but they know how important signage is and visibility and because you're on the elevated ramp, you can't see the buildings. And so you really need a sign to say, hey, uh, here's my business, here's where it is, here's how you get off and to market your business. Uh, once people find it, uh, they'll come back to it and continue to stop there, but they've got to find it the first time. We have found that, so, you know, it, from the variance request, the height of the road is creating a hardship for us. Uh, exhibit, exhibit eight, this is if, um, the sign per the ordinance was thirty-five feet. You can see, you know, about half of the sign. If the sign's fifty feet, you can see the full sign. We're proposing six panels on the sign. Uh, the sign is also proposed at two hundred and twenty-seven feet, uh, square feet, and that size is a safety factor in that the lettering and the, and the font needs to be big enough so when you're driving sixty miles an hour, you can see it clearly and you're not, um, you know, trying to focus on it and not focusing on the road. So that sign, the current ordinance allows a thirty-five foot sign with a hundred and sixty feet. We're proposing one fifty foot sign with two hundred and twenty-seven feet. The current ordinance also allows us to put two signs on our property, two thirty-five foot signs, a hundred and sixty feet each. We're proposing one sign. So we're actually decreasing, let's say, the visual sign space on the property, but we're making it more effective, uh, more concentrated right on the hard corner where it will be seen. So hopefully that will clean it up versus a number of signs. As you guys know, when you drive up and down seventy-one, McDonald's, Schlatzky's, um, you name it, there's a lot of signs that are already fifty feet tall that were put up before the ordinance. Those signs aren't even having the overpass issue that we're dealing with, so we're getting compounded with. We have marketed the project to a lot of, um, good users and we've landed a lot of good users, but some of our very high quality users that have come to us have said, look, if we can't get a sign, we can't come here because it doesn't fit our model, we know we're not going to be able to see and we've got to get a sign. So we have real, you know, proof that the sign is a problem, or sign, current sign height is a problem. Um, again, uh, fifty foot, high-quality sign, meeting all safety concerns, engineered, uh, designed by a certified sign, um, engineer, six panels eliminated. Um, let's see, the, the granting of the variance, we do, it is true that a thirty-five foot sign does work, uh, for the site, but really only for the access roads. So sure, a lot of cars can see it from the access road, but the forty-six thousand cars a day coming up and down Highway seventy-one, it really doesn't work for them. We talked to, um, our property owners and, uh, notice was sent out as proper process, but we talked to the, the Shell Station owner next to us and he issued a letter of support for signage requests. Having a good quality project with good quality tenants, um, regional or national or long-lasting tenants will only improve the value of the area, improve the value of the community. We have the pond park being built right back behind us. We want to have the best tenants we can, can have in there and, um, I think it will only show good for the community and for the surrounding neighbors. Uh, again, just the size, uh, the larger the, the sign that we have proposed for industry standard tables, um, and the number of signs allows a, the proper size for the proper speed and the safety factors. This was included in your package, that this is industry, uh, standard documentation of how big a sign needs to be at certain speeds. So life safety is taking an effect here with this size of a sign. Uh, the financial hardship, like I mentioned, we want to get the best tenants we can, the city deserves it, and to do that, they're not going to, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the tenants have specifications, they want to be at a hard corner in a certain area and if they can't get into that area, it's not moving down the street, they may just move to a different market. So this is a good shot at getting good tenants, um, and good businesses in the, uh, in the, in the Bastrop area. Furthermore, really, that hard corner, we see it's such a pivotal, uh, spot, it's front and center and it's, you know, basically across the street from, um, across the street from us right now. And to get a good, solid user in there, we need to be able to provide good signage. The, the flip side is, you don't have good signage, you have people going out of business, you know, every year or two, or you don't attract the right group from the beginning. And we know that if we can provide good signage, good location, we're going to get a good quality, long-term, uh, user for the facility that's, that's going to add value to the neighborhood, add value to the city. And I think that is about it. If you have any questions.
Okay. Now?
Um, I agree, there's been much discussion over the, the height of the signs and things on the freeway, on the highway because of the overpass and things, and I, I know it's something that Mike is going to be looking into and I'm glad to see that that's happening. I'm wondering, in addition to that, um, and, um, I'm looking, I mean, I, I see what you're saying by the suggestions that you've made and the, um, the way you're looking at, uh, increasing the height of the sign. I'm wondering also, though, uh, something we worked on years ago on the highway, in addition to the signs, you've noticed that, um, we worked out something with text dots for businesses on the highway to have the signs that, uh, basically denote what business is coming up as on the exits. Uh, is that something that you all are anticipating doing also? Because I think that will help tremendously. I know when I'm traveling somewhere and I'm not familiar with the area, I always look at the exit signs and they have the names of the different businesses, whether it's a Best Buy or a gas station or a restaurant, and they have those, I know they have to pay to have those installed and everything, but that's another way of marketing and getting your customers to you. I think it's been, um, it's effective for me when I'm traveling, I think it's effective for people when they're coming through here now too, because now we do have those signs in abundance out on seventy-one, so that might be something you would consider also putting into effect because they do work.
Yes, I mean, we, we are going to look into that, we haven't done that before, but some of our clients have done that, so.
That will make a big difference. I mean, I don't think it's just the sign necessarily because as you said, as people are flying by, but they do notice the exits with the names of the companies and especially with the logos and things, if it's a known company, or if it's just gas or food or whatever, um, that makes a difference, so I hope you'll consider that in your marketing.
Well, definitely, and, you know, several visual reference points, you can only be, you need to be told two or three or four times where something is.
Exactly.
So linking that, uh, text dot sign with a, a visual sign and an exit and knowing the exit will all be in a safe exit. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mike, did you want to, Willie's question, then Mike, you want to comment? Yeah. Can you turn your mic on?
The question I was asking about the planning department, had anybody checked along the lines of what he said that, I know there are a lot of signs out there that fell before the, under the grandfather clause before the, uh, this particular ordinance took effect. Had anybody looked at maybe what the sites, like how many fifties there were? Had anybody looked at maybe what the sites, like how many 50s there were, or how many above 50s, or?
It was referenced in the, the sign board, or hearing. There was like four to six, but it didn't give the exact height, but they were above the 35-foot.
Was there any above 50? I'm just curious. It didn't have any effect on him, but I was just curious.
Not that I, I think they were right at 50.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, you want to say anything else?
No, I'll wait for my recommendation when we get to the action item.
Okay. Any other comments during this public hearing? Public hearing's at a close. Before I read this caption, since it doesn't show the address, does that, is it referred to because we're overturning, or we're gearing a variance to a previous decision?
Yes, sir.
Consideration, discussion, possible, of item B9. Consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding granting a variance to the City of Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Sign Ordinance, Section 3.20.016, parentheses, for Polly Sign on State Highway 71-2. Number one, allow for an increase in the total square footage allowed from the standard 160 square feet up to 224 square feet, that is, an increase of 64 square feet. And two, increase the height of the sign from the standard 35-feet height up to a height of 50 feet, that is, a 15-foot increase. Mr. Talbot.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, you have two options regarding this request, granting the variance or denying the variance. I did spend considerable time going through Kevin's reapplication to the board. I made at least six trips out there to look at what he had provided in his reapplication, and it is my recommendation that the council grant the variance. My findings are that special circumstances do exist which affect the land and development such that strict applications of the provision of this article would deprive the owner or applicant of the ability to advertise a sign or product. And in this case, the applicant has shown that the current ordinance does not allow for sufficient exposures for his business and the tenants he's wishing to attract to 46,000 vehicles traveling on State Highway 71. Further, the applicant has demonstrated the visual impairment that the guardrail causes his sign at the 35-foot level, and increasing the height of the sign from 35 to 50 feet would remove that visual barrier. Two, in granting of the variance is based upon finding that the applicant's difficulties or hardships are not due to unusual conditions or circumstances. In his application, I mean, he has demonstrated already that he has lost two national tenants, and the council has set forth a business-friendly environment for the City of Bastrop, and I think that's being consistent with the direction of the council regarding that we do not want to lose two national tenants. Three, granting of the variance is based upon determination the variance would adversely affect the surrounding property owners and use. You saw during his presentation, a business right across the street was not objecting to it and driving the area. I think the sign that he proposes would enhance the area, especially with that being the main entrance into a new subdivision that's being built into our, our city. Granting the variance would not be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. Again, the applicant is not going to build a sign in a manner that would create a public safety matter, and I think enhance safety, again, because of the visual barrier of the guardrail. And you really have to go out there and drive that very slowly to really get the impact of the guardrail and the visual impairment. Financial hardship, again, the applicant has responded that, you know, he has lost two potential tenants, and by adjusting the sign will be for the best use of the site and the location of his building. And finally, which to me was the most compelling, is that the applicant, what the applicant is asking for is in proportion to the barrier that he's confronting. He's not asking for a 70 or an 80-foot sign, he's not asking for an extensive wider sign, he's just asking for reasonable percentage increases to address the location of the sign in relationship to the, to the guardrail and invisibility. So based upon those findings, I'm recommending that the council grant this variance.
I move for granting the variance.
Motion by Gary, second by Kelly. I want to, what, what is presented here. I want to comment for the record, just repeat what I said. I'm very appreciative of our sign review board, the hard-working board. I think they do a good job of trying to apply the law or the ordinances that we've set. I think that if, I encourage you to vote yes on this, and if you do, I hope that city manager and the citizens of the community and our sign review board take it as an indication that we have an antiquated sign ordinance in regard at least to this issue, and Mike stated very clearly, you know, I think what some of the parameters can be if, if we change it, and I certainly encourage that ahead that you would change it. But this is a way for us to make a statement, not just about this particular issue, and but, but it to be the first of what really needs to be everybody going forward. And I think that's, that's something I want to especially state, you know, for the record.
Mayor, just one clarification, I want to make sure that the motion, you are in agreement with my findings, because I'll have to put that into the order.
So the motion will include the findings of the city?
My motion includes the findings of the, agreement with the findings of the city manager.
Okay, Kelly. We're okay with the second on that. Thank you for that clarification. Also, I understand that at least 75 of us have to, or 75 of the five have to hear it. Do we, is it requiring extraordinary majority?
No, 75 have to approve.
75 have to approve.
Because this thing here says was heard by 75%, not voted on.
Well, um.
It has to be a supermajority, so it needs to be there with.
With Miss McInally absent. Okay, y'all understand what that means. I think, Doc, do you want to say anything?
I would like us to vote.
I think we're ready to vote, Ann, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you.
Kevin.
Item D1 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of an ordinance in city council of the City of Bastrop, amending section 1.15.501 Creation of Ethics Commission of the Ethics Ordinance and the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bastrop, providing a serviceability clause and providing an effective date. This would be, is this an ordinance, so this would be a first reading? JC, that'd be passed twice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so this would be a first reading on that. Kelly.
In a previous meeting, we discussed the potential permanent, well, not permanent, but appointment to the Ethics Commission of Judge Chris Dugan, and the mayor stated that he felt that he could not appoint Judge Dugan because he had made a pledge not to appoint an elected official. And after that conversation, I realized we may have put him in an awkward position because the way that the ordinance is worded does not specify that a judge is okay in that position. So working with JC, we came up with some verbiage that not only allows for a judge to be on the Ethics Commission, but due to the specific nature of the matters that the Ethics Commission deals with, a judge might even be preferred at times. And I'm offering the wording in paragraph B on the second page of this ordinance as, as the addition to that. To clarify that, a judge could be a member of the Ethics Commission.
You want to go ahead and make that as a motion, since you've got the language here?
I, I would like to move that.
Is there, is there a second? I just wanted to comment that I can't imagine a mayor of Bastrop not doing anything but paying careful heed to our, to our ordinances in every form. Or what, you can take that for what it is. Discussion? I think we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for your thoughtfulness. Item B2 is a resolution.
Does that go on consent next time?
May I get your pardon? Oh, yes, this takes twice. We're voting, I'm sorry, we didn't have it phrased that way, but we voted on first reading, and I think there's unanimous consent that we wanted on the consent agenda for the next one.
Could you add to my second? Uh.
Gary.
I'm cool with that.
So, is that okay with you?
Sure.
Okay, so we, we have the amnesty consent plus, everybody thinks that's what we were doing, at best I can tell. So item D2 is, thank you for that clarification. Just, just what it is. I'm concerned, and I've talked to a lot of people that are concerned, I've talked to the county judge and others. I think we need to send a message to everybody out there that, I mean, I'm not sure why L.C.R.A. is not doing the, the gauging of the river and the reports and all that, but this allows for us to say, you know, we got to do something better than what we did on the last flood in terms of the prediction. And I just lay it before you and hope someone will move it and hope you will pass it.
We have an act of rule that prefigures leadership on this, they will lead on, on city, as a council, on Colorado River, here in Bastrop County. We don't need to wait for anybody else to give you the leadership and bring us to the council on this particular item.
Yeah, but I'll say, if you go on the consent agenda.
No, this is just a resolution.
Oh, it's just a resolution.
Yeah, so, no, so what we'll do is I'll get with Ann and Mike, and we'll figure out who to send it to. I mean, lots of higher-ups and L.C.R.A. people and congressmen and legislators and all that stuff, and just say, here, here's where we stand. We got to do something about the Lower Colorado River.
My understanding, the chief brought up at staff meeting this morning that they're already making plans to improve two locations and add three more locations as we speak.
Or gauges. The question is, who's reading the gauges and who's making the predictions?
Right.
I'm not sure the National Weather Service is prepared to do that when the L.C.R.A.'s been doing it extraordinarily well for 60 years. So that's one of the points, and the others are in there, and some of what we're asking, they can say we've already done it, that's great.
Good.
I think we're, I don't think there's any discussion on this, Ann, I think we're ready to vote.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Thank you all, and we'll, we'll get the word out, make, make everybody that we, let everybody we think needs to hear it know how y'all feel. Thank you.
Could I make a suggestion?
If it, if it passes the smell test by JC, that it's on the agenda, let's hear it.
I don't think she'll stop me.
Keep going, see what happens.
Well, you know, we get confused sometimes with the first reading or second reading. And then on, on the page, like B3 through the bottom, it was always said first reading of an ordinance. And when we got to D1, it was on the second or third line where it said first reading. And sometimes it might be confusing if it was put like.
I got you.
Yeah, and I think Ann and I are both hearing that too, correct? It would be, it would be better to clarify it that way. Thank you very much, and that's a good suggestion. Item D3 is consideration, discussion, and possible action on accepting the unaudited monthly financial reports and quarterly investment report for the period ending September 30, 2015. Ms. Walter.
Good evening, Councilor Mayor. On page 197, basically a summary of the general fund and proprietary funds and the hotel fund, just wanted to point out, we ended the year very strong, meeting or exceeding our budgeted revenues and coming below our budgeted expenses in all funds. Also on page 200, I did a calculation on the sales tax going from fiscal year 14 to fiscal year 15, and we collected 12% more in 15 than we did in 14, so it was a very strong year. Ad valorem, we collected 7% increase from 14 to 15. Y'all have any questions for me?
Just a side note, I hope you caught in my city manager's report, we had a good month this month, and had an 18% increase in our sales tax collection.
That followed that little loss last time.
Yes, or more than lost like that.
Tracking, tracking pretty well.
Yep.
We, I think it would be appropriate for us to accept this report.
I agree with your objection.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and item D4 is consideration, discussion, and possible action regarding approval of the First Amendment to amended and restated Development Agreement. Mr. Talbot?
Yes. Before I get into the discussion of this item, I want to publicly and personally express my apologies to the excess ranch. There, there should have been a duplicate item tonight, which was the consent agreement, which was inadvertently left off the agenda. They're both tied together, and either if you pass one, then you're going to pass the other one, but it should have been on the agenda tonight. And if you pass this tonight, I would ask for your consideration that we put this, the consent agreement, on the consent agenda next week, because they need to move forward. And it was just an error that shouldn't have happened, and I'm very embarrassed that it occurred, and will assure the council it will not happen in the future.
We would insert this as a real quick item in our workshop meeting next week.
Next week, yes, sir.
And I'll just say to Ann, let's put that on the agenda.
Thank you. John?
Is this, first amendment to the mayor's estate, was this, is this from August, from May, or what?
What, uh, when did we do that?
November last.
November last, that's what I thought.
So we don't know sitting here tonight what we needed in November.
Well, we basically increased the density in certain areas of the, of the excess ranch mud agreement. Remember, they came back to us with a market study, and you, after reviewing that, you instructed us to work with them, and we just basically, in the, what I call the pods out there, and then inside the mini-pods, you allowed for an increase in density and number of LUEs.
Okay, because I don't want to get into the deal about number one after about a decade. I don't remember, I don't remember the year.
That is new.
That is new.
Yes, sir.
Why was I doing that?
I'll, Mr.
I'm going to ask you to mute, Mike.
They're, in discussing that in our phone conference, they're, they're tying this, this condition is in our mud agreement, and because of what they have to put up to get the bonds issued, they needed this security for issuing the pit bonds for their reimbursement. We did review this with Mr. Wakemiller and Mr. Fowler, and they said this is not an unusual condition when it's tied to a mud and a pit.
Well, I don't think, I'm sorry, the reason that I asked you here is because when we started this, I had a problem with pit, where we were rolling.
I understand.
And we, we go along, and you need this pit, start the fire, and go that, start that, buy that, start that, whatever. And it was all very good, it was a pit. And it was all great to ten years. Now, all of a sudden, you turn back and say, we can figure out there, and here's what bothers me, is the city, somebody's got to explain this to me, right? But here again, this is what makes it better. Every time we have a discussion about excess ranch and pit, it's at the last of the agenda where nobody's here to listen, and nobody now knows what we're doing. That's the point that bothers me the most, because when I get asked, and I have to have a lot of y'all come to the meeting, I mean, it bothers me why not all of a sudden all that, and liability and obligation after 10 years? This was never decided in the first time we took this up, and I thought that that's where we were heading with that agreement. And now, if that comes to you, now you want to change it?
I, I did tell them and made them aware that there would be council concern over this change. I made them aware of that in our discussions. I did evaluate it with our bond counsel. I'm just...
The bond counsel doesn't answer the citizens here in Bastrop. That's not concerned. Do I tell them that that's what the bond counsel's supposed to do?
No.
Okay. Somebody tell me why, I want, somebody from the city to tell me why we went from, from where we started before at the 10-year deal and where we were suing the debt liability merits. I know you talked about it, and there was discussion on this, and I just, I just maybe want somebody to explain better what I can understand, because right now I don't understand.
As part of issuing the pit bonds, as I understand it, and I am not a pit expert, but as I understand it, they have to put their property up for collateral as issuance of the bonds. And to secure their investment, to make sure that they get their return, after going through this process that we've been going through over the last few months, putting this together, it's financial protection for them to ensure that they get their investment back.
Okay. Financial protection for them. Explain the liability and debt to citizens in Bastrop.
There...
Is there a company?
No, because...
The city doesn't have to annex.
No, there wouldn't be, if the city annexed, there is no liability, other than you'd be dealing with the same issue that we dealt with out at Hunter's Crossing. You have city taxes, and you have a pit tax.
Okay. I just want, I understand that part. I want to set on, I want it for record to the secretary of state to know, we don't sue any debts or liabilities. Why won't we sue any debts or liabilities? I just want to set on the record, then we can move forward.
I guess it's the...
Let me imagine, because you're not an expert on this either.
Let's play.
I have always, I have always struggled from the Hunter's Crossing to any pit, how the city is not liable, but we're the vehicle that issues the bonds.
How do you do that, Mike?
It's the way the law is written, we don't have liability. I, beyond that, Willie, I would have to get a pit expert to give, but the way the law is structured, they need a vehicle, a municipality is the vehicle by which, is the only authorized vehicle to issue the pit bonds. So, they have to come through us, but there's no liability to us. I know that seems at cross purposes, but that's the way the law is written.
I'm going to, I'm going to call on Doc, and then...
Well, you asked him to answer, has he not answered?
I want to make sure it's on record. That's the only thing I'm asking you, make sure that the bar you just laid is on record.
Yeah, we've got it, we've got it, we've got it recorded. It'll be on TV, and Ann's going to write it down, and for this section. And Mike?
And I want to state for the record, that's my answer to the best of my ability. If you want a more concrete, specific, than I suggest, we got a pit expert down here that can explain the law, because I'm not a pit attorney, and now we're getting above what, the interpretation of the law, and I am not going to be accused of misleading the council.
Nobody accused you. I didn't want to answer or let the latter take the decision. I'm going to answer, if you stop me, I don't want to answer. I didn't ask for a pit attorney. I don't know anything about a pit. And our last deal with Hunter's Crossing, it should have been enough for us to take notice. You're the one who brought it forward, I just want to, I want you to answer, and I'm not accusing you of anything. I just want to answer that question.
Mike, did your statement cover what you needed?
Again, I want to state, to my understanding, both out at Hunter's Crossing, we do an assessment right now out there for capital reimbursement. We have no liability whether Forestar gets that or not. All we are is the vehicle that assesses that capital reimbursement and turn it over to them. With the bonds, as I understand the law, that was explained to me, they have to go through a city to issue the bond, especially since the project is within our ETJ. The law says, as I understand it, there's no liability to the city. I can only repeat what the attorney has told me, because when I saw this, I knew there was going to be a concern, because this is a change, and I did take the time to talk to our bond counsel because of the change, and that was his layman's explanation to me.
Let's make sure we get that down, so everybody's covered for what they need to say. Doc, and then I'm going to ask J.C. if she wants to add anything.
I just want to say, no, I'm not a pit authority.
Turn your mic on.
I just wanted to, for the record, say, no, I'm not a pit authority either, although I serve on the pit board for Hunter's Crossing, but that does not make me an expert, nor do I profess to be. But my understanding of the situation is that we would have no liability unless we were to annex, and then if once we annex, there would probably be some costs and some other things that would come into play with this, but as Mike has explained, and as I understand it, the mechanism has to be executed by a city, and that's why we are taking the action or contemplating the action in this case.
I just want to make one point of clarification. If the council does annex it, the council has one or two decisions to make, to continue to assess the pit or to pay the pit bonds off. Where in essence, you would then be issuing either certificates of obligations or some other method of financing to pay the pits, pit off, and if you did not do that, you would have to carry the assessment forward.
I want to...
That's all I'm looking for, right there. Thanks, Mike.
I want to, I want to, well, can we, can we hold off on that one? I want to deal with this other issue first, and come back to that, because I don't think I understood it. J.C., you want to say anything about the obligation of the city on these bonds?
No, he's expressed...
Okay, Mike's done it. So, did I understand you to say, let me ask it another way, maybe I misunderstood. I would understand that if we went out and annexed, if this pit deal goes through, went out and annexed, say, the houses that are in, the land that the houses are on inside this pit, why would it be any different than what we have at Hunter's Crossing?
It wouldn't be, but I'm just saying, just so that we all understand, when you annex it, you've got, you really do have two options. You can go, you can continue to assess the pit fund on top of your city taxes, or you can issue bonds and pay off the pit bonds, and you will no longer have the pit assessments, and that would be a financial analysis that would have to be made at that time to see if what we were getting in increased revenue would offset the cost of issuance of bonds. It may not occur for five more years after we annex it. I don't know. That's what I don't know, but you do have that option to do that.
The, what is the length of time that we're bound to not annex?
I think we've agreed up to not seven years, 10 years.
10 years, under this amendment.
Okay.
What was the first...
We could have annexed it upfront.
Because, you know, I just want to say, just for the, for the people following us, it would make no sense whatsoever, except for our concern for the people that live in that area, to not annex it immediately, in terms of money. There are other things we would consider, or at least I think I hope the council will consider, but unless we thought we'd just kill the development or something. But if we, if we had the chance to go annex Hunter's Crossing right now and get the revenue from the ad valorem tax, wouldn't be any skin off our noses to go do it. And the same thing's true, the same thing's true out there, and that's the reason they're asking for the 10 years. And if, whatever this condition of the pit is after 10 years, in terms of money, it makes no sense for the city not to go ahead and annex it. So, I just want you to be aware, the vulnerability of the company doing this, and I'm not advising anybody to do that, but I think that's the way the situation lies.
Well, Hunter's Crossing is already in our...
If Hunter's Crossing was not already in the city limits, and they had a pit, and they were within our area to annex, it would make no sense for us not to go annex them, because it wouldn't cost us anything. It'd be too bad for the people that live there, who are already paying the pit fees, but it wouldn't be any skin off the nose to the city of Bastrop. Same situation would be true out of Excess Ranch, except we're writing a clause in there that, well, we're contracting to require our successors in office, or some of y'all that are still here, to not do that for 10 years, because in my mind, it's extraordinarily tempting to go out and annex it immediately, as soon as there's a house out there. Other thoughts? So, Mike, where do we stand on this?
Well, I like Mr...
Oh, we haven't even heard from John. John, we know everything. We know everything about this. You've heard what we think. What do you think? Sorry, please go.
I just want to, maybe not clarify, but kind of understand the situation here. We amended the, or reinstated the development agreement back in November. This is an amendment to the development agreement. This isn't an amendment to what we've discussed per the pit. This was, these are things that were actually a part of the pit discussion, and it came from previous discussions with the council regarding the mud annexation and the timeframes that are, that are in the mud, and our understanding of what the council was looking for was, to try and mirror the annexation rules that are, that are part of the district and part of the consent agreement. Those rules, which are agreed upon, is a 15-year limitation on annexation, or 90% of the total indebtedness. It's, it's not apples to apples considering a mud is a governmental entity, and states, my understanding is state statute requires that the cities assume the debts if they annex the mud districts. In this case, the pit is not a governmental entity. A pit is really a financing mechanism, to Mike's point. And so, that's, that's really the only reason we have to state this in our development agreement or our agreement with the city, is to protect, really, it's the bondholders. These bonds that we're going out to sell would be pretty much unmarketable if they knew that the city was going to come in the next day after the bonds are issued and impose an additional city tax over that. And so, we've restricted, we've gone from, you know, the bond term is about 30 years, but we've looked at it, that our bond counsel would say, well, we can, we can bring that down to 10 years. That's about as short a time period as marketable for those bonds. So, that's the window that we're looking for. And so, I just want to make sure, and then next week we'll come back, that consent is a part of the development. So, it'll be similar language.
And the 10 years allows us to maintain the great partnership we've had for almost 10 years, and get y'all down the road, so you can get your development done finally.
Yeah. Truthfully, in 10 years, hopefully, it'll give us enough room.
We'll have a bridge cross the Colorado.
Well, I guess, I just, we had our first pre-bid meeting for the bridge today, so all the contractors...
Yeah. And my comment about annexing and all that stuff has nothing to do with not wanting this thing to go through, or having any negativity towards Excess Ranch development. I think it's, it's a very important thing for us, and we've worked, this council has worked for a long time before, well, some of y'all were here before, before a lot of us were here, so it's a, I think it's a good project. Mike, we need, is everybody satisfied with the question, with what we're doing?
I would recommend approval.
So, we are hearing from Mike. He's still here for questions. John's present for questions. Discussion, motions?
So, we want to take this up tonight, and then move on next week.
Then we'll finish next week.
Next week is identical, it's just, it's for the consent portion, and that was, should have been on the agenda tonight. It should have been.
It doesn't cause a time issue for us, so...
One doesn't go without the other, so it's just...
Yeah, so, right, so say it again, Willie.
I would immediately... You want to hear what you said? I thought the...
I thought you said you wanted to say something to make sure...
No, I just said, I was, I'm okay with that, that is, I understand, but...
All right, okay. I want to make sure everybody's clear, clear on this, and that somebody, if we make a motion tonight and pass this, then we'll bring it up next Tuesday and finalize what Mike missed, and we'll make up for, for that not being on the agenda tonight. So, I'm assuming that you, this, that passing this thing kind of indicates we're probably going to pass it on the 17th.
Right. You're going to have two conflicting documents.
So, if we move forward, I'll make the motion that we go forward with the manager's suggestion and recognition. And we're going to present it.
Or is it a double? Is it a, it's not, it's just a one-time deal, right?
But the other one, I was recommending that the consent agreement could be put on the consent agenda, because it's the identical thing, it's just for the consent...
So, we have, we're only going to have one item next week.
Right.
So, it doesn't make any difference to me. We're just, it's going to be the only item that's off of, we're going to act on.
Right.
Okay, we can phrase it any way you want to. It's okay with me. But we have to, it doesn't matter. It's going to be one vote.
I'll sit there. So, you moved, I said.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And we, we know what, and we know what to do for, and we'll just make it, I think we ought to get it done at the first of the meeting.
Yes.
Like, you go home, because you stayed up all this time, and then we'll just get that, we'll knock that out in three minutes, and then we'll move ahead with our, our purpose, our other purpose.
Mayor?
Do we have anything else on this agenda?
Mayor, can I make a quick comment? You're, you're looking for stations for river monitoring? We're putting in a bridge across the Colorado that's about six miles upstream from the city. If y'all are looking for a location, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
Can we fish off of that bridge?
Or if you down.
Spit off of it?
Do that. Just can't jump.
Use that bridge, or whatever we have a bridge, off what they call it.
Up back.
Yeah. So, any of those.
Can't have too many bridges over that room. I don't know, where are we? Who's got...
D5.
D5.
Okay.
D5 is consideration discussion of possible action regarding waiving all city of Bastrop building permits for those individuals who lost their residential structures from the recent fire or flood and decide to rebuild, to rebuild their homes back in the city limits of the city of Bastrop. I know that Willie brought this up, so, and there's a narrative about that. You want, what do you want to, you want to say something, Willie, and then we'll let Mike weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor. I spoke with the manager on this one day, and, you know, aside from what the chief and as far as public safety from here, from, you know, police or police vehicles or fire trucks or whatever that was sent to the fire over in Smithville, you know, I just thought that, you know, there might be some peoples that have gone through this maybe once, twice, three times, and, you know, maybe they just don't want to go back, and they might want to move into the city, and I just thought we could reach out to them if we, if we could or if we chose to, if they, if they chose to come into the city and build a, build a home or relocate here, we can, we can waive some fees and help them along that way, because I'm sure the majority of all those people that are in that bar come to Bastrop and do a lot of their shopping, so they contribute to our economy as far as probably sales tax. So, I just, I thought that was waived, but I'll turn it over to the manager, let him talk about the permits and everything.
You know, it would vary upon the value of the house, but as I stated in the form, we did institute this policy after the 2011 fire, and it did encourage people to come into the city to build, so, and some people, I understand, have been hit twice now, and so, as Willie and I were discussing this, there's not a whole lot else the city can do to help the people who've been impacted, so if this helps them, I think we ought to consider it.
And you'll have ways of verifying...
They have to be verified. It says I have to verify that their structure was either destroyed by the flood or the fire.
Would we approve this?
I'm going to let Willie, I'm going to let Willie make that. Gary's motion, Willie's second. Y'all ready to vote? Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliland?
On item D6, I imagine everybody in the room knows...
I'm just going to read this brief statement. I'm just gonna read just a brief statement.
Well, can I make a brief comment?
Sure.
I'm sorry, off on D5, since we did.
Can you turn, is your mic on?
I love it, I'm, but.
Looks like it.
Now it is. Since we do have the press here, I hope that the advertiser will mention this significant action by the council, and make sure that the citizens are aware of this, and hopefully that will encourage them to move into the city of Bastrop.
Good point, Doc.
Knowing that we welcome them wholeheartedly in their difficulties.
So, then you'll have to.
Are you tweeting?
Okay, Mike?
Um, we, there's no action on item D6 other than to state that the SOA hearing that was scheduled for, for this Monday has been rescheduled by the judge hearing till after the holidays, and the hearing will begin on January 6.
Do we have a, a executive session?
Nope.
Uh, let's see, who's, who's been the most patient tonight? Kelly, you wanna make a motion?
I do, adjourn.
Uh, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Gilliland?
Yes.
Councilmember Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Delarosa?
Uh, we stand adjourned.